Public Meetings Act. Admitted notice that this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in those is of March 26, 2012. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices. Mailed to the Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, the North Jersey Herald News, and the Nutley Journal. Mailed to the Nutley Township Club. Advertised in the Nutley Sun on April 5, 2012. Posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. I'd ask everyone to please silence their cell phones and please stand for the flag salute in a moment of silence. Our military. My allegiance to the United States of America, into your own forces, in your nation, in your God, indivisible, in the great justice of all. Well, please.
Here.
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 Here. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as distributed? Second quarter. Discussion. All those in favor? Close. Minutes are approved as distributed. Any correspondence? The first item on our agenda is the athletic presentations. Mr. Byler.
Thank you, Mr. Cookton. Last thing, this is Board of Education. It's my great pleasure to be here today and we're going to honor the all-conference athletes who fall by our name from spring. We have two divisional championship teams from spring. It's my pleasure to do that. I want to bring everybody up to start the cross-country and work our way straight down. I would ask that everybody hold their applause until they can lay an end season and we're going to fold all our athletes. Representing the cross-country team with the first team, all SEC honors, Mr. Jonathan Brau. Representing the cross-country team with SEC honorable mention is Ann-Maria Compa. Representing the cross-country team, second team, all SEC, Owen O'Connor. And representing Kevin Robinson from the cross-country team with first team SEC bid, Mr. Drago Stomata. From the football program, second team, all SEC, Peter Carisima. Second team, all SEC, Phil Cadidito. First team, all SEC, Matthew Delmore. Second team, SEC, Andre Hamlin. First team, all SEC, Louis Magliaro. Second team, all SEC, Kevin Burkle. First team, all SEC, Gregory Palm. Second team, all SEC, Tyler Pablis. First team, all SEC, Nicholas Rodriguez. Second team, all SEC, Carlos Rosa. Honorable mention, SEC, Nicholas Schrader. Congratulations to those members of football. Representing our soccer program, the boys first. Honorable mention, SEC, Mr. Erie Berger. First team, all SEC, Michael Diarches. Second team, all SEC, Azuki Amuro. Second team, all SEC, John Latta. First team, all SEC, Evan Kewen. And most of those guys are not here right now because they're playing in a soccer game tonight, I believe, some of the other class results. Congratulations. Representing the girls, the second team, SEC bid, Jamie Towery. Representing our female tennis program, the first team, SEC bid, Ms. Nikki Wong. Honorable mention, Ms. Arden Saridio. Representing our volleyball program, the first team, SEC honors, Ms. Marissa Kazmar. Second first team, SEC honors, Ms. Molly Kazmar. Second team, SEC honors, Ms. Molly Denard. And honorable mention, Isabella Rodriguez. Congratulations. Very successful fall and it was all due to the efforts of those student athletes. Moving on to the winter, in our basketball, girls' basketball program, first team, all SEC, Ms. Tonya DiMatio. First team, all SEC, Ms. Jamie Towery. Second team, all SEC, Ms. Eileen Purcell. And honorable mention, Ms. Jasmine Small. Representing our bowling program, first team, all SEC, Mr. Vincent Amato. First team, all SEC, Mr. Tyler Dewey. First team, all SEC, Mr. Christopher Mona. And honorable mention, Martha Patel. Congratulations. Representing our ice hockey program, first team, all NJIHL, which is the New Jersey Inters Athletic Hockey League, Mr. Anthony Gandolfi. Second team, all NJIHL, Mr. Alec Astroga. Second team, all NJIHL, Mr. David Piero. And three honorable mentions, Mr. Ryan Denard, Michael Fray, and Mr. Bill Power. Congratulations. Representing the wrestling program, our first team, SEC honors, Mr. Anthony DiLorenzo. First team, all SEC honors, Mr. Ralph Key Pasquale. First team, all SEC honors, Mr. Nicholas Gaynor. First team, all SEC honors, Mr. Brandon Keenan. First team, all SEC honors, Mr. Robert Trembetta. Second team, all SEC honors, Mr. Vincent Manero. Second team, all SEC honors, Mr. Jordan Knopf. Second team, all SEC honors, Mr. Carlos Rosa. And honorable mention, Mr. Andre Hamlin. Congratulations. Moving on to the baseball program, second team, all SEC, Mr. Kevin Garcia. Second team, all SEC, Mr. Nicholas Gariano. And honorable mention, SEC, Mr. Phil Cadidito. Representing the golf program, our first team, SEC honors, Mr. Brian Back. And our honorable mention honors, Mr. Dylan Schwab. Congratulations. Representing our lacrosse program, the second team, NJILL, New Jersey Inters Athletic Lacrosse League. Second team honors, Trent Tedesco. Honorable mention, Mr. Nicholas Rodriguez. And second team, NJILL, Salvatore Gaiman. Representing our softball program, our first team, all SEC honors, is Eileen Purcell. First team, all SEC honors, Ms. Victoria Malaga. Second team, all SEC honors, Ms. Carly Anderson. Second team, all SEC honors, Tonya DiMatio. And an honorable mention, the SEC, Ms. Morgan Butteira. Representing the boys' tennis program, second team, all SEC honors, Drago Stomata. Honorable mention, Kevin Robinson. Representing our track program, the first team, SEC honors, Eileen Armando. First team, SEC honors, Ariel Flahon. First team, SEC honors, Ms. Megan Montgomery. First team, SEC honors, Ann-Maria Compa. First team, SEC honors, Lou McLauro. First team, SEC honors, Reshak Chambers. First team, SEC honors, Greg Pah. Second team, SEC honors, Laura Dagen. Second team, SEC honors, Grace Montgomery. And honorable mention, for boys and girls, Elias Seville and Tom Brau. This year was a great track program, had a great one. I'll call up our head track coach, Mr. Bob Odell, to present to him the SEC Liberty Division Champions.
Okay, just as a quick note for the graduating seniors, this caps a great career for them. This is their second title in the side of four years, so they have much to be proud of. I know we'll all miss them a lot and they're very young, as we're looking forward to continued success. Bring them forward. Members of the team that took the title, John Bruin, Erie Berger, Reshak Chambers, Joe Deluzio, Matt Delmore, Mark DiMaggio, Rocco Donatello, Andrew Flynn, Joe Ainini, Tvek Johnny, David Young, Mahlema, Lou Magliaro, Rob Malulo, Yasutaka Uzawa, Greg Palmer, Lou Pastiman, Chris Pangin, Don Correa, Patraeus, Ahmed Seville, Elia Seville, Joe Stickles, Jordan Lupo, and Anthony Z. Congratulations.
Thank you, Coach Odell. In my haste, I am very sorry, but I forgot the members of our boys' basketball team that received SEC honors. Second team, all SEC, Mr. Nicholas Gariano. Second team, all SEC, Mr. Jonathan Russo. And honorable mention, Mr. Christian Schroeder. Congratulations. I'd like to bring up our head coach of the girls' crew team, Mr. Kevin Smythe, presenting North Jersey Champions.
On behalf of the crew team, I'd like to thank Chris McCarron, the High School Administration, the Board of Education, for their ongoing support of our program. The girls that you're about to meet and I, we realize that not everyone is aware of who we are and what we do, so we'd like to invite anyone to come down to the boathouse this coming spring, anytime for a tour or for a Bible reading or launching, we'll show you what we're all about. This race started three years ago. It's the North Jersey Championships. It's any school with a program in North of Marston County is invited to attend. And within the three years of its existence, we've been fortunate enough to win six titles, two on the boys' side, and that is our fourth on the girls' side. The girls' Mars to the eight, North Jersey Champions. Monica Benitez. Sarah Montez. Lorraine Karluji. Jacqueline Azajowski. Taylor Lupo. Emma Martin. Tara O'Marons. John Abellio. And Marie Fernandez.
Good to see you late for the plane entry, Mark DiMaggio, SEC Liberty Division Championship Boys Track, come on down, one. It's been, as I always say, it's been a very successful year. I'd like to thank Mr. Lazick and the Board of Education for allowing me the privilege and opportunity to be an athletic director at such a great school district with such fantastic student athletes. I'm the luckiest guy in the world because I do something that I love and I get to watch young men and women do extraordinary things on a daily basis. I wish everybody a happy, healthy summer and good luck in your summer endeavors. Thank you.
Congratulations to all the athletes and their coaches who are a job well done. A lot of awards collect the program. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation on the Common Vision, Mr. Lazick.
Thank you, Mr. Cookton. I want to thank everyone who spent the last six months with us working on Common Vision. Looking forward to have board members to sit down while we have a break. While they're taking their seats, I'd like to introduce Dr. Bill Obrera and thank him personally, I'm sure I'll do it again, but for guiding us through this process, it's such, what I think is such a successful end result. Dr. Obrera, if you can screen that for me.
And you know what, obviously you did last night, just stop it. You got that here. Actually, if you need anything, I'm going to be like...
Wait, are we taking this off?
Right over there, like at the church. Just, it's a break, so I think we'll... And maybe it is, but I thought he said break. Just keep it before you have a...
Good evening. My name is Bill Obrera and I've been fortunate enough for the last two years to work with so many people in this outstanding community. First, a year ago, it's actually a little more than a year ago, working with the board to find a superintendent, a choice that they made, which was an excellent choice, was because they worked so hard and worked together. And when asked if I would be willing to work with the community on a strategic plan, I was delighted to accept it. Now, just about every school district in the state of New Jersey and probably beyond has a strategic plan, many of them not very good. And that's because they tend to be long, they tend to be layered, they tend to be something that finds its way to a shelf somewhere and not used. And the people, and there were forty-some odd people, cross-section of this very strong community, who worked for six months to produce what it is that I am going to show you. And it is presented to you as a product of great work that they did. My test of whether or not a community committee is a viable and vital and successful school, community committee, is if the person who's in a position to facilitate, which is what I was asked to do, can't tell which member of the group is a teacher, which member is a parent, a community member. And that was the case, that people had worked so hard and were so respectful of one another. I have every reason to believe and I think you will as you look at this and see this unfold, not just this evening, but over a five-year period, because that's what good strategic planning is. Is it gives you direction for where a district needs to go and why it needs to go that way. And it is never in any kind of finished product. It is very much a guide. And so what we're going to do now is just go through this PowerPoint so you can see the elements of it. And what I'd like to do is go through this and then answer questions when we are finished. But before I do that, there are a number of people who are, were on this committee, were here this evening. Would you please stand to be recognized by people so that you can see who these people were and how much work they did? I'd like to thank you again, as good a group as I've ever worked in terms of this important task. So it's important for you to recognize their work, not only tonight, but as it goes forward. So thanks again. So let's begin. Okay, first is the process, and I'm trying to go through this quickly and I want to make sure that I'm not blocking people here, that I was just blocking you. All right. It is important to get this to work. You don't think this has gone that far? Oh, okay. I was afraid we had a battery freeze here. Okay, this is what constitutes a strategic plan. Those are the elements. And they are done just in that progression, that you start with what you value. And then that produces a mission statement, the purpose of what the district will do. Then there is a vision statement, which based on that mission statement, talks about what the district looks like achieving that mission. Then there are goals, which come out of focus areas, and then there's specific timelines, influential issues and forces, and then strategies as to how that's going to be achieved, and deliverators, which are really those things that we're not going to do, the Nutley School District is not going to do because it won't further the plan. Keep in mind that above all, this is a plan, it's a guide, it's direction. I don't know whether I've lost all power in my fingers. So this gives you an idea of the cross-representation in this group of forty people, who worked so hard for six months, culminating with the final meeting that we had a week ago last time, when we looked at all the pieces and how they fit together. And that the timetable was established in January and we stayed on that timetable. And we stayed on that timetable because people came on time, worked for the whole time we were there, and in between these meetings, worked with each other. We did a lot of work in small group and then what rarely happens is when you get small groups to work as well as this group work together, then we were able to do things as a large group as we got near the end of this. So as you can see, that's a cross-represent, or that's a representation of this community. So here's how we proceed, starting in December, initial meeting, but that was basically just laying out the plans. The meeting went from January to May June, and of course, we're here this evening. And you can see things as they went along. And if you'll remember the plan on the components, we did it in just that sequence. Start with values, then to mission. If you don't do that, then the mission is hard for it to follow any kind of path. There were also documents that came out of surveys so that the committee was in a position to look at what people from this community said was important. So it came from leadership team, then students, not then, and students, and parents, and staff, and community members. So it's broad-based. These are the things that guide the questions all along. The thinking points, as you can see, you start with values, go through on how do you communicate, what are we going to produce? This is, these are the questions that you continue to ask, which produces the document. Also, you have to look at data. So not only do you have surveys, not only do you have forty people exchanging ideas, working together, you also have all of these documents and all of these sources that tell you things about where you are. Because what you want to do with this strategic plan is go from where you are to where you want to be. And certainly, you must know where you are in order to do that, through surveys as well as... So here's the plan. All of that was how we got to the plan. Now here's the plan. Here are the values. Now I'm going to read them because you can read them as easily as I can read them to you. But keep in mind that the danger in strategic planning is to produce a fifty-page document that nobody reads. The real value, the real important work, is to streamline this so that people can see a number of things, but those things clearly guide. That leaves you a mission statement. This I will believe. The mission is to challenge, inspire, and empower students to become creative, confident, passionate, self-directed citizens who actively and purposely contribute to our or in our global society. If you can get a mission statement to be a sentence, you've accomplished something. And yes, there are lots of pieces in that, but all those pieces are important. And those are pieces that we must remember, and it's easy for me to include myself in that pronoun. Must remember this as, as you're going forward. And then if you look at that and said, if we could have students who could do all of those things, embody all of those things, would we believe that they were going to be actively and purposely contributing in our global society? I don't think there's any question about that. How we do that's another question. It'll always be difficult, but that's a clear guide to what it is. Now we'll move to the vision. The last one came up on any press test, so there must be something that we need to address. Anyway, take a look at the underlying statements, the underlying words here. Starting with sustainment. Makes no sense... Makes no sense to put together a document if you can't sustain it. Then there are very, and the group struggled with this, the right words. Integrated, efficient, innovative. And then have unifying, and be unifying in driving the force of the community. You'll notice through most of these, there's a connection, a very important connection between what we want to do, what the number of school district wants to have students do, and how it's going to be connected to the community. Because you can't do that. And when you do, you're not going to accomplish much. And then you can see measurable growth, but it gets back to the characteristics together. It's very hard for anybody to be successful if they're not confident. And usually, you're not confident unless there are things that you are able to do and do well. And so that has to be an emphasis, and it was in all the work that was done. Notice also self-directed comes up again. Because if you're going to educate people well, young people well, then they have to be self-directed at some point. And self-direction is an act of leadership. And that's of course, what is also a big part of this. You see the reference to personal too. There's a recognition that to educate people well is to have them be self-directed and have them be guided by things that are personal to them and important to them and valuable to them. And you can't do that. You can't develop anything with young people on a personal level unless you know them. And you can't teach people you don't know. So those things are all closely put together. And again, this is a group of forty people that struggled with what's the right word. And if you've ever been a part of a group of talented people, you know that that word-smitting is never easy. That building of a consensus is never easy. But this group was able to do that. And then of course, the ongoing excellence is what you see. Okay, now I get to the goal statement. So you laid out, we laid out, they laid out, the group laid out. Here's what we are going to do. But in order to talk about what you're going to do, goals become an important part. Notice the reference to June 2017 in every one of them. Because June 2017 is the conclusion of a five-year period of time. That what happens with this is it's shared with the board tonight. The board looks at it, thinks about it, and then engages in the analysis of it. We were very fortunate to have three board members on this committee who worked very hard with us. Charlie Kay worked with us. Lisa worked with us as well. And Dr. Reed worked with us also. And worked alongside committee members. And I can't remember to mention, or I could if I had a piece of paper, the other thirty-seven people. But we were fortunate to have the voice of board members as well in this, working alongside. Okay, here are the goals. Now, the goals are separated into important categories. And I'm not going to read them all, but the first one is character. That you have to think about the character you want to develop in young people to have them be educated well, to have this district move forward as it should. So that's the first one, character. Certainly have to help people, help young people communicate well. Including listening, as well as talking, as well as doing things together. But there's also clear references to certain things, like you have to have a technology-based system if you're going to prepare young people to be successful in the world that they will enter. And you can see the continued reference to measure. That's to take ideas, put them into place, and then evaluate how successful you are. So measuring becomes an important part of that as well. References again to the community. Not so much this is what they do, this is what we do, but this is what we do together and how we do this together. And this is a community where that pronounced relationship is very strong. It is what characterizes in so many ways the things that are so admirable about this community. What I want to continue to build on that. These are the measures. What it is that you see, what it is that is being sought. Core competency, content from performance. Again, developing personal learning experiences. It's really important to see this emphasis on personal so that there's this balance in this plan between that which everyone should master and that which enables young people to go in directions of strength. And that can be done, and that will be done as a part of this. But it is a really interesting balance. And then presentations of their personal growth and learning to a variety of suitable audiences. Not just for teachers, to each other, to the school, to community, so that people, all people can share with us and understand. Configuration has to do with, as you read, what the district shall look like to enable, endeavor to form itself to do all of this. And that does the physical, financial, and instructional. Curriculum. You can see assessment, professional development, professional practice that's current, relevant. Curriculum area will be reviewed at least once every five years. The results of each process will be presented publicly. We have two other parts left. There's the strategies. How this gets done. Open and continuous communication. Inspiring and energizing students. Identifying and utilizing active partnerships with the community. Utilizing only the existing resources that support students' achievement. And acquire new resources necessary to do more. Last part, the delimiters. These are the things that if you remove them, they get in the way. So that resources are judged by the degree to which it helps students achieve. And when they're not doing that, then they're no longer purchased or used. And they're certainly not replaced by the same ones. New programs and services can only happen with support systems in place. Ineffective past practice doesn't interfere with the consideration of new ideas. We don't do this because we always did this because we always did this. It's not something that happens only in this town. It happens everywhere. But when you focus on delimiters, that allows you to excuse us, does that get in the way? Changes in policy and practice without defining what changes, why it's necessary, who's responsible for its implementation, and when it's accomplished. That's the strategic plan. Right to the end of this. It's not very rough. The second part of what I've said about the strategic plan amounts to a page and a half, which is easy to follow, easy to read, and easy to be used as a guide. So, the last part here is the continuation of the work. Next steps. There will be action committees. And then there will be draft year-one objectives. And this becomes a document that not only guides, not only is a part of the ongoing conversations, but is something that changes as it needs to be changed. No plan of any work is ever established for five years without modifications. It doesn't work like that in general. No plan that's fifty pages anybody can ever remember. Page and a half? When you think about forty people working for six months to produce a page and a half, that's a tremendous accomplishment. It always takes longer to make things shorter than it is to make it long. When you make it shorter, what happens is you have to struggle to make sure you've got just the right words, just the right ideas. So, now that the board has joined everyone else, instead of me saying, well, I'll take questions from the board, why don't I just take questions from anyone? Okay, be easier. Again, would you please pay tribute to the people who worked so hard to produce this? And without separate applause to the board members who provided such guidance, first to have this happen, and then for the three who joined us and worked so hard with us for the whole time. Really appreciate that. Charlie, please say it. Okay, questions you have about anything that's here? Process or any part of the conference?
I have a question though. But I'm certainly not the spokesman for the group. There were forty outstanding people there. But I think we all need to recognize Dr. LaBrera for the leadership that he gave us to have forty minds come together one night, going back and forth into different rooms, meeting, and then coming into one conference room to talk it over. The leadership was there. And even though we might have gotten there, it would have taken us a lot longer, I think, without his leadership. And I just want to remember.
Thank you very much. I will, I really appreciate that. Mine was the smallest role of all of this. It was the forty people, it was the outline. It is the great work that this community has come to expect of each other that made it an absolute pleasure to work with you. So let's have your questions and your thoughts and reactions next, please. But thank you very much. Appreciate it. Questions? Jim? No questions? You want to take the mic?
Just take the mic. Go ahead. I'd also like to thank Dr. LaBrera and all the committee and who worked on this. I think it's an outstanding job that they've done to, again, to have a strategic plan, which is an extremely important step for the district in creating a framework for decision-making and decision-making process. Having it come down to, as Dr. LaBrera said, a page and a half, and it can be concise and on the mark, I just think it congratulates on a little bit.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, questions? Sure. However it's easy for you. Want to come up and grab the mic?
I'm fine.
Or you could shout, it's okay. Go ahead.
I just want to applaud everyone for the work that was completed. So good job, everyone. So this is now a strategy. And you put down as the next steps as one-year objectives. A key, two key words, I believe, in your mission statement are measurable growth. You've listed up your subcommittees. You put down as your next steps as one-year objectives. Your financial plan, or your plan culminates since the June and then September of 2017. The opportunity now is to understand, as you said, where we're at and where we want to be. So number one is, where do we want to be? Have we identified baseline schools, best-in-class schools that we could measure ourselves against? And number two is, over the course of the five years, the measurable growth. Do we have quantifiable metrics from years one, two, three, four, five? Will we consider those to measure ourselves so that we understand that we're on a plan over the next five-year term?
We absolutely agree. Thank you for that, son. And if I'm not mistaken, one of the first times that I was in this community, you were a part of the parent group, raising the question of whether or not there was such a guide in this community as a strategic plan. And there were some elements. But one year later, after forty people worked as hard as they did, we have. And if this produces the kinds of ongoing questions of one another, what do we mean by, are we sure of that? Is this enough? Then this will be a huge success, as I expected it to be. Thank you. Someone else? Yes, sir?
Dr. LaBrera, one thing that was listed earlier in the front page was...
Close enough to have a use of the microphone.
Well, I had listed this as a timeframe for achievement. And I see our first two, next action, I would perform action committees and the draft year-one objective. What is the timeframe of that?
What I understood the timeframe was going to be is that we were going to present this this evening. We were going to be invitational to not just members of the committee, but people who saw this and wanted to contribute and would come forward to do so. So I think it is certainly the work of people on that committee, many of whom want to. But it's also an extension to anyone who sees parts of this that they think will have value and contribute to making this still a much stronger district than it is, although there are certainly things of which you can be proud, but you can't stand still. So I think it's invitational to others as well. All right? This son.
Okay. And you explain what action committees, how many there will be?
I think the action committees will come out of the statements of goals and purposes and outlines. And I don't know that we know it's six or seven or eight so much as we know it's topical. And those topics will be established, and then people will be asked to join. And they will understand that this was the value of the way this was constructed. Not by me, by the administration and by the committee. That what we decided to do was not work for four hours every night, because that doesn't work. But we never exceeded about an hour and a half. And we always started on time and we always ended on time because talented people can't sign up for endless commitments. And we will continue to follow that. If you want to be involved, here's what it will involve. Here's about how much the time will be involved. Here are the timetables. Because it's another form of the measurables that are deeply embedded in this. Thank you very much for your kind attention. This next goes to the faculty in September. They've already received it. But there is going to be some discussion with them at the beginning of the school year. The committees are established to go forward for continued work. And that's going to be done in the summer. And every intention is to take this fine document, not to make it longer, but to make it better. And to make sure that all of the discussions have the kind of internal discipline that the committee had. Not to add more pages, but to find words and ideas and concepts that are more powerful than what was considered before. It's been an absolute pleasure for me to be involved in this as it continues to be each time I have some opportunity to work with this great community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. LaBrera. Again, just want to thank you for all your efforts and for working with us. I'm going to speak more about the strategic plan later, but I know some people are probably going to rush out if you're as late as you can. I want to thank everyone in the committee for the time you have given, but also, as we talked about, for the time you're going to give to give to make this strategic plan a reality. Again, to talk about timeline, if you've already started the work, we will follow that work through the six categories, six focus areas that we talked about, so we have a minimum of one action committee for each of them. And then from there, as Dr. Labrera said, we will focus on what needs to be done first, second, and third, and as hopefully fewer committees and more actual work, action committees are needed, we will have those as necessary. But again, thank you, everyone. I cannot say how excited I am for the finished product. I love language. I was an English-made and history teacher, and I think this language is incredibly charged. In fact, we love challenges, but we have some in front of us. In fact, we love students and measuring outcomes. It's very pioneering, this mission statement. I find it inspirational. I think it's exciting, I think people can get excited about it, and the kids better watch out, because we have a lot of big things planned for them, and it affects everybody. We're looking for everyone to get involved. It's open language, but it is, it's action, it's active language, and so we look forward to it. Dr. Labrera, thanks again. Thanks to the committee.
Next portion of our agenda is going to close executive session for approximately an hour. Whereas Board of Education is discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10,4-12, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education reassess the closed executive session. It is time to discuss personnel and contracts for the services. Be further resolved with results of discussion made public by inclusion on the agenda, subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, if within the reasons for discussing such matters in closed session will not exist, this is approved. Hold the favor. Now we head to the closed executive session.
Please have a moment.
Second.
Hold the favor. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. The number of things have transpired since our last meeting. First, I know Mr. Spazada is going to comment on this later, but I do want to take the opportunity to thank you, Mr. Cook, and Mr. Spazada, and the committee, Mrs. Gazinski, and Ms. Flynn, for giving their time. Mr. Scott versus here, and Mr. Stockers, and the rest of your committee. I know I said a lot, but I want to thank you for taking the time and day today. Very happy to report that we were able to settle the teachers' contract before the end of the school year. The end of the school... Before the end of the school year, I think it was in the best interest of everyone, in the most certain of the students of this district, so I think everyone was involved. Professional Services, I did want to make a comment on Professional Services. I want to thank our procurement committee earlier in the year, as well as the finance committee throughout the year in the change. We've been doing things this year that we have not done in the past. It's created somewhat of a bottleneck in the year, but all of our RFP, RFP processes are continually appropriate. In the future, we will have the full calendar of Professional Services, so this does not happen where we have a lot of jam or multiple things, and to be fair, on our administration, which I will happily say is small, it becomes very difficult for us to manage the district and keep multiple RFPs going at the same time. I do want to thank Yanacahuas School specifically, but congratulate all the elementary schools for the end of the year battle for books. Ms. Mitchell had both Ms. Valani and myself out to the school, where we watched the students display their passion and their knowledge, having read an extremely large number of books, depending on the group. They were challenged with all sorts of questions, and watching those students passionately and eagerly compete with one another to see who had mastered the texts more effectively. It was inspiring, so thank you all the teachers for doing that every year. Staying at Yanacahuas School, just again to update the board, I was there last Tuesday, where we spoke about the variance issue, the population issue. We discussed the solution, and I've been sharing both in academic and in administration. We will be able to maintain the number of sections in Yanacahuas School we have creatively with Mr. Swanson and Mr. Nicolet found space. Will be no hardships in that building. We were able to do this because as the numbers have shifted across the district, we were able to collapse a section in a different school, forcing a last-minute transfer of staff. But I'm happy to report that at the end of the day, all districts, sorry, all buildings across the district will be able to maintain their class size, and we'll be able to maintain our budget as projected from a few months ago. Happy to report that our pre-K, our kindergarten, our grade six, our grade eight, and our grade twelve graduations went off, I won't say without a hitch, they were interesting, but I am thrilled to have been part of it, to stand on the field of Mr. Klitschko for his last ceremony, and really challenge the needs of these students to their next four years and what they're going to make of them, as well as to stand with the other board members and Mr. Barry, as we graduated our twelfth graders and sent them out into the world. Everything from the clapout to our pre-K graduations, certainly some academic, not like the character, the tradition that we have here, I think it means a lot to the students, and it speaks volumes of our community and certainly of our schools. An update on our vector, I know that we made changes to vector this year with the academic committee. Ms. Valani had been working diligently with the coordinators. We're doing our best, and we're hopefully actually this week, to get our vector information up on the website. We modified the process this year to make sure that it was objective as well as subjective. Teacher recommendations, certainly student work throughout the year, but also including vector assessments this year. Those assessments have raised a lot of very good questions about what's going on in school at the elementary level, how we're scheduling of our curriculum. It comes in a very perfectly timely fashion, in the sense that Ms. Valani is embarking on some rewriting of curriculum this summer, both mathematics and language arts, so this information is extremely helpful. It's raised a lot of good questions that we're going to have to struggle with and answer as a district, and I look forward to working with the staff to do so. It is the end of the year, we are actually approaching July, and I believe it's already been one year. That has meant the close of our strategic planning, as well as a rush through our annual process this year. What I can say is we've effectively established goals, district goals, instructional, building goals, as well as the personal goals for teachers. It's the first time we've done this, and now that we've gone through the process one full-time, we will be holding everyone, myself, all the way through, all of our faculty and staff accountable for reaching those goals. That will, I think, in a sense, be able to communicate what's going on in classrooms more effectively, but most importantly, be able to move student achievement in the direction we've been talking about all year. Last piece, thank you again, Dr. Labrera, and all the members of the committee for our strategic plan. It is a page and a half, and as Dr. Labrera said, brevity is critical when it comes to a strategic plan. I do want to say again, I am excited about the language. I've been involved in a number of strategic planning initiatives, and like he says, a lot of times they end up on a binder, or at the bottom of a stationery, or they end up on a shelf. It is our goal to make sure that the pieces that were painstakingly carved out in that strategic plan become a reality for the district by the utmost 2017. We will be starting that, we already started the outline and plan for that, but this summer we'll kick off that work. I really am excited by what that committee put forward and the vision that we have the work toward, which according to the board is something that we needed and something that we haven't had. Every step that we take, every resource that we place, needs to be in line with that strategic plan, so we are ensuring the absolute best for the community, for our staff, and certainly for our students.
I would just like to provide an update on the, thank you, Mr. Spazada, on the energy improvement opportunity that came to the district from PSENG. They have outsourced the project to Lime Energy. Mr. Nicolet and I met with them and PSENG last week to provide authorization for them to gain access to our buildings, and they will be on site starting this week through the first round of approvals from PSENG. They will be starting with the high school, followed by Radcliffe, Spring Garden, and Washington to conduct the energy audit, which will then be reported back to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cook, I apologize, Miss Yaman just reminded me of two pieces I did want to share. The first is a agenda I had for tonight, as far as the district physician. We've been talking about shared service all year, and moving forward with the physician, I would say between $15,000 and $16,000 to the district for the similar service. The other piece is that, as required by law, our administrators have to attend legal training every so often to be certified by the state. We were out of compliance, and happy to say by Wednesday we will be in compliance, thank you, Ms. Valani, but also we were working, we've been working with Bunkfield. The superintendent there and I have been talking about shared services, and Ms. Valani has been working with their instructional leaders. We're actually receiving the training for no cost, so the same as the district, anywhere between $12,000, depending on the consulting. So I want to make that clear.
Thank you. Committee reports. Mr. Ordinating for academics?
No, no academics.
Negotiations.
Okay. Just not a report, but a statement, a quick summary. I wanted to thank my committee, Mr. Gazinski, Mrs. Flynn, and Mr. Cook. I'd like to thank the BA, our board attorney and superintendent, for their time and hard work on the teachers' negotiation contract. I especially like to thank the teachers' association for their time and hard work and cooperation to getting a fiscally and educationally responsible contract. Just to highlight, you know, a quick, it's a three-year contract, first year, two percent, second year, two percent, third year, 1.5. We have some concessions on health benefits, and overall, it's a good contract and a good process. I hope we can be as successful as we finish our negotiations with the custodians.
Thank you. The finance committee met on June 12th. We discussed the financial status of the 2011, 2012 school year, and as a result of that, we're recommending to the board that we deposit $25,000 into the capital reserves. I think there's sufficient surplus at the end of this year to do that. We discussed the, continue to discuss the five-year financial projection and the analysis of needs assessment of the district as we go forward, and I think as the, now that we have the strategic plan, we'll have to start incorporating those factors into this five-year projection to make sure that we have the resources that are necessary. We talked about the school position as a shared service, and again, that's a recommendation tonight that we go into, enter into that interlocal contract. We discussed the five-year optics for the township, which would be a combination of a shared service again between the district and the township, and are seeking the financial analysis that would justify the expenditure. We've talked, discussed the grant for Radcliffe Lift, the elevator that was installed that the county should be paying for, also the geothermal grant, making sure that the proper paperwork is done on that. We discussed the district-wide staff increases, and made a recommendation for a pool of increases to the board, and... The next meeting will be July 17th. Hearing of the citizens' resolution items only, we now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board regulations allow 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember always to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. The first person wishing to speak, please step forward.
Vince Locurcio, 14, Pointe Avenue. Good evening, everyone. I'm quite dismayed that we're going to consider renewing our current law firms or represent us going forward, and I just need help understanding how we arrived at that process. So, explain to me the RFP process, was that a submit, a request for applicants, law services?
Yes.
When did that start?
It started out, December. We sent it out, we had 13, 12 or 13 respondents, we had an ad hoc committee that went through all of them, reduced the number down based on, you know, limited qualifications. The ad hoc committee interviewed a number of the firms, and then made a recommendation of two firms, which the full board interviewed, and that's where we were at.
So you downed two firms or one?
We were down two, we interviewed two, and this is, the resolution is based upon our interviews with those two firms.
So...
And you have two resolutions, one is general counsel, one is appointing a special counsel.
I'll analyze that later. So, six months of review, served 13 candidates, and the best candidate we came down to was Pomaco, the Gashos, off the smog here. That's true.
That is the resolution that is on the floor that we will be discussing and voting on.
I find it quite upsetting, I tell you, that, you know, that all the candidates and all that process, that, given the history of our council over the past, recent issue of the past 10 years, I mean, the debacle happened, what I call a lawsuit, that we're moving forward away from that, and to think that this is the best we came up with is quite upsetting. Let me ask a question, does the council, current council have a lawsuit against us?
No.
Did he ever file a lawsuit against us?
I don't think so, no. I do not believe so.
Okay, so you don't think that, you don't sound sure of it. He may have filed a lawsuit, maybe. My understanding is that there was a lawsuit filed against the district, my understanding is that there was a consent on that, and so way back...
There was, the parties reserve the right to file suit in future.
So, in my book, my attorney's one job is to keep the attitude. I think this council has failed to do that way back, you saw it. The 10 years of the debacle, Tri-Tech and all that, there's a lot of blame to go around, but our council was good on it all. That alone, the fact that he's suing us, to me, to be about that, I consider the candidate is all, it's quite upsetting. And I put the responsibility on the board members here. It was just, last year was a pass, he's a new guy to watch. We were all here, you may not have been serving on boards, we were all here doing the debacle. We all saw it, and what was happening was we're wasting taxpayer dollars, we're getting distracted from the job of educating our kids, and we want to move away from it. We're moving away from it. It wasn't dynamic, he's building a dynamic team, I'm excited about where we're going. With this one last piece that I want to hang on to, I don't understand it, and I just want to say that, you know, I think we should give a reasonable, the best counsel possible. That's really all I have to say on that issue. I do have a question on the resolution number 11, the administration, the other attorney, the bond counsel, the bond counsel or the new bond counsel, is that the counsel we had 10 years ago with the, that debacle?
Yeah, it's the same bond counsel. The, the appointment is until pending the RFP process.
Okay, explain that to me, because, so we're proving these attorneys pending the process, so what does that mean? The process happens, something may happen, and we may change?
We have currently RFPs out there for detective bond counsel that we're reviewing.
But again, once that process, does that mean that you may find something that will change?
Yes, this appointment is temporary. It's sort of interim, yes.
Construction, terminate, bond counsel, and the architect?
Yes.
And the amendment, the stolen and bond counsel, that lies on the original bond with Tri-Tech, that, that what you said?
They were around, yes.
Listen, I'll be honest, again, I see you have two, then, the special counsel, what is that for, the special counsel?
We're, it's exactly what it says, special counsel.
So we have, you've got a regular board attorney, you've got a bond attorney, construction attorney, now a special attorney. Why all these attorneys? Why we need four attorneys?
We have a plan, which I'd rather not comment at this point.
Fair enough. I just got to tell you, again, I put the responsibility to the board, we crossed a pass, we're all here with that, we want to go forward, we waste a lot of money, cost a lot of money, distraction, costs taxpayers money, costs education, and then with distraction and all the debacle, education got away from, went this way, and that's bad for the township. My concern, my concern is that schools is this most important piece of our town, you understand that? I think that it's important that we go forward, we are going forward, I just have trouble understanding this piece of...
Thank you.
Mayor, I think, just to clarify one part, Mr. Perso, the, yeah, the resolution, the resolution 11, the bond counsel, the architect, they're there, of course, we're still waiting to complete the RFP process. They're there, basically a day-to-day process, of course, we need them there. We need an attorney to cover us.
And they're specialized.
Legally, legally, until we find a new attorney, if that's what we choose to do. We're waiting for that RFP to come back in, then we look at them, and then we can move, that might be tomorrow, that might be next week, it will be soon, this is we get over that prospect, but in the meantime, we do need by law someone on board to cover us till that time occurs.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, that's...
I appreciate that. Again, I just, I just find that after six months of surgery, 13... Again, I just, I just find that after six months of surgery, 13 firms, the best candidate we came up with was Mr. Curran, so it bothers my mind, given, given the history of where we came from. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Michael McLeone, 560, 500, St. Kevin. I wanted to follow up on what Mr. Locurcio was talking about. Just to review some history, the firm was the firm that helped to draft the original Tri-Tech contract.
That's not correct. The contract was back to 1999, and Mr. Demaco was not the board attorney.
What about the renewing, reacquisition?
He was not asked to review those documents by the board.
And then in addition to that, were they not the law firm that recommended the settlement of Tri-Tech?
Yes, they were.
And that settlement was subsequently overlooked on. This recommendation followed a long period when they had been advising the board that the board was on solid ground in their actions. This resulted in a fairly costly lawsuit and a settlement that resulted in us having to, the district having to pay $750,000 to Tri-Tech, which we have not yet recovered. Isn't that true?
Yes.
Why would we be even thinking about keeping these folks on? Reminded of the, of what I said, if we're defined insanity as, as doing the same thing and expecting different results, we don't have a great track record with these folks. Why do we need a special counsel to handle areas that that firm can't handle for a number of reasons and then continue to use this other firm? Why can't we just use the, the special counsel for everything?
As I stated earlier, we have a plan, which I'd rather not discuss at this point.
Thank you. All right, that's all.
Neil Henning, 31, 300, still on the issue of rehiring a general counsel. It's my understanding that although they were not on the original contract, and that the person that drafted the original contract did become part of that firm, correct?
He was a part of the firm for a period of time, I believe.
Correct, and that's, isn't that how a general counsel actually became the board attorney for nothing?
I do not, he was not on the board at the time, we can't say. I do not know, I was not on the board at that time.
When you hire an attorney after there's contracts in place, would you not expect that attorney to automatically review outstanding contracts?
What the past practices were, I can't say.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, if you were hiring...
Going forward, we have that, we do do that going forward. On a prospective basis, we have the attorney review. What prior boards have done, I can't speak for.
But isn't that normal practice for any attorney to, not, I'm not talking about the board responsibility, it's the attorney's responsibility to. And if you want, we can go to the New Jersey Association of School Boards, and you can look and see what their recommendation is for board attorneys. But basically, it says they are supposed to review all contracts. Now, this particular one, it's even more disturbing in the fact that on this one, for many years, the board was looking to get out of the contract that we were in. And is it not true that this attorney said that we were in an indefensible position in the negotiations?
It's, it's not exactly what was said at the time. It was in closed session, we had it...
No, it was not in closed session, it was in open session, and he absolutely said, "The board is in an indefensible position," and that's why his recommendation was to settle for that. And that was in open, if you can go back, if you can pull the notes, that's what was said.
But that's your recollection, Paul.
It's not the recollection, that is the fact.
Good, you have a point.
So, my point is, I, I think it is a good point. How are you going to rehire an attorney who says you're in an indefensible position and settle for 2.5 million, and then Judge Kennedy comes out and says he will not make a ruling that will be even to more detriment to the people of nothing than all the past that has gone on with general counsel? How is it that this guy is even, in, in, how is he not disqualified from being in the process?
He submitted his RFQ, we reviewed it, and this is where we are at.
How is it that he's allowed to submit the RFQ? How is it that he's not disqualified from the get-go?
What would be the grounds for disqualification?
Saying that we're in an indisputable position for 2.5, the judge coming down saying, "You got to be kidding me." I'd say that would be where, if it was my counsel, that would put them in a disqualified situation.
I hear you. Do you have any other points?
Yeah, fortunately, yes, I did, especially on this counsel. There's been many instances where we've gotten bad advice, and for many years, not just with the Tri-Tech situation, everybody has said, "Well, that's the, that's the, that was the information that we got from the general counsel." And that's what we relied on. Now, that's what we should rely on. But when that advice turns out to be incorrect, we shouldn't compound it by keeping that general counsel on.
Thank you for your comments.
Now, regarding the process, you said there was 13 firms that put in, and only two were interviewed. Could you tell me what the process was?
I did not say only two. I said there was an ad hoc committee which interviewed, I believe, five firms.
Who was on the ad hoc committee?
Could you keep going? I told you, described the process already.
Is that not public information?
And I've already described the process.
Who was on the ad hoc committee?
I don't think that's relevant.
Is it public information?
Probably, should be, you can over it if you like.
Well, if it's public information, then why don't you just tell us?
It's Mr. Kaczynski, Mrs. Flynn, and Mrs. Russo.
And so, they went out, and they had a process that they had, and what, by what qualifications did they look at in order to come up with the final candidates? What was their criteria when they were looking at these proposals?
Sure, it was cost, it was accessibility, it was record, references, those kinds of things.
So, was there any formal written criteria when we, when you had this process, or was this just a ad hoc?
They had a score sheet.
A score sheet? And when they did, when they finalized the scores, were, were those scores given to all the rest of the board members? Were the rest of the board members informed of all these terms that were put in?
I think it was, if they, if somebody had asked for it, I'm sure they could have done it. It was not something I was held to confidence.
But that wasn't, that wasn't something that was given to the other board?
Now, can you, can you move on? We understand your objections to Mr. Demaco.
I'm trying to understand how we can get to this point, again, again, after many years of everybody saying...
I understand your objection.
Well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to come to grips with how we got back here, and if you can, and I'm sure there's many citizens that would also like to know. So, I think if we get into the process and say we have a plan, we'll have a better idea.
Mr. Henning?
Charlie.
The process started out, candidates putting their resumes through the RFQ process. There were 12 or 13 law firms that put in their information. The questionnaire that was put together by the ad hoc committee, along with the superintendent and business administrator, asked questions such as obviously their cost, their experience, their accessibility, what they could offer us, and so on. Then, we graded them according to, on our own, we graded them along with the superintendent and Mr. James, and then those 13 were narrowed down to five. And the process continued again with the same ad hoc committee and the input from the superintendent and the business administrator, and then that the five were narrowed down to the two. The two were then presented to the entire board. And then the entire board brought forth the resolution that you see tonight.
Okay. And when you go through that process, did we look, was one of the criteria, did we look at how many lawsuits were against the firms that were put in?
Yes, sir.
Yes?
Yes, sir.
And how many lawsuits are pending right now against the firm that we're considering?
Lawsuits from...
Lawsuits from clients?
None that I know of.
The, I think that the disclosure, there was the, the suits are against one of the partners who had been released from the firm. All the lawsuits were against that partner, not against the remaining partners.
Or a partner in that firm?
Who was no longer with the firm.
With that firm?
The one lawsuit that's standing against that firm was against an attorney who no longer is with that firm.
And, so there's, there's pending, there's pending lawsuits, and that, that, I, that partner is gone, but at the time, the, the Demacos also were the partners, correct?
Yes, sir.
And yet, this is, this is, we wound up, that's okay?
Any other comments?
That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Alan Thomas, 101, McKinley Street. Mr. President, my position on retaining a board counsel, popular lung uses, not only my students' microphone several times in the past due to voice map objections, but you have talked about it, about it several occasions. So, I want to lay before all those boards, I just would like to point out two things. One, I object to bringing this type of motion, this type of resolution for the public on a genuine basis. We've been doing this with the board the last couple of months, and get my mouth shut on it. Board appointments, principal, assistant principal, and so on, genuine basis. Any public notice it will, and I think that's regretful, a really good student, a traumatic habit, realize we're going to rush the end of the school year, and we're going to need to get together, and I certainly have kept my mouth shut because I know Mr. Lazman is working his best to get his team together and almost stand in the way of that on a technicality. This is not something that I can sit by. I just think this is absurd, I really do, and I know we've tried very hard over the past year to make things more streamlined, more open, and this just arises in the face of it. I wish we could stop this process, Mr. President. The second thing I noticed, I paid very close attention to the wonderful presentation on the strategic plan, and I can't help but thinking, one of these resolutions that we have now is a genuine reappointment, back channel, offer, okay, violates one of the limiters that we listed to you today. Okay, and as to continue to use resources in person that don't support student achievement. Okay, over the past couple of years, this board, advice of that counsel, has spent $750,000 on settling agreement that should never have been entered into. It is, it is not going to be compelled to pay the state $300,000, almost $300,000 in refunding capital improvement money that I don't know, have an capital improvement account, I think it has to come out of a general operating account, okay? Because the contract was deemed just by the state, same way Judge Kennedy originally deemed it as being illegal after the first two years. I got to tell you, when you spend a million dollars getting bad advice, it looks bad. I wish the board seriously, seriously reconsidered this. I know the board, you know, means what, this doesn't look good. As my interest speaking tonight is that this doesn't look good, it can't be made to look good, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I agree. I would like to, for the time being, Mr. President, I made a statement before that the council was not asked to review contract documents, you became counsel for the board, et cetera.
Yes, sir. Not only he didn't, he doesn't necessarily review, if, if he was not given a contract, he was not, he didn't review.
Would it be fair to say that you were not in the board when he was hired?
That's a fair statement.
How would you know that he was asked not to review?
It's hearsay.
Okay. My second point is, and again, don't mean to be redundant, I think pretty much beat it, do a dead horse, but it needs to be said. Seven years ago, eight years ago to the day, we had a meeting that the only person present was you. Everybody else sitting up there was at that meeting. The only other person who was in that meeting that's standing in front of today was me. And one of the caveats that I gave to the resolution that passed that night, when under extreme threats, we were told that we had no other option to sign that resolution, proving $3.2 million to Tri-Tech, where we went to trial and arbitration that Monday, that we may pay excess of $4.2 million. Is that accurate detection?
It was, we were told that we had a 20% chance of winning in arbitration, 80% chance of losing.
Your counsel was Gashio, Demaco, and Melanga.
Melanga was the one who spoke to us. He's the one who was no longer with them.
But he had just come onto the program at that time before Melanga, it was Alba Traleo and Frank Demaco, correct?
Yes.
And the caveat that I proposed that we add to the resolution to kind of take Gashio, Demaco, and Melanga off the hook was by adding language in the resolution that stated that we would only agree to pay less, $750,000 under approval from bond counsel, correct?
Yes.
Our bond counsel is the same bond counsel we're approving tonight, right? And this board has not only had 12 months to get to where we are today, but you've had May and June also, so you've had literally 14 months to get to where we are today. Now, I log, by July 1st, we have to approve these resolutions to appoint these people temporarily, would be it, correct?
Yes.
I think, I'm going to take the emotion out of you, even though there's a lot of emotion in my soul right now. It's time to clean house. It's time for a clean slate. It's time to move this board of education and the town of Nutley past who we've gone for the last 10 years. More than that, since 1999, when Frank Apaleo Vesta entered that, entered that agreement with Tri-Tech, and then went to work for Demaco, Gashio, and Beckton, it really is time to move past it. And yet, we can't seem to move past the kind of group of these people. I don't understand why. I don't understand why we even have this conversation. I can't even understand that four intelligent people got together and sat down and said, "This is all a bad idea." When a year and a half ago, when I was sitting up there with you guys, who said, "It's a bad idea." So, how we've gone from a year and a half ago to this is a bad idea, to approving these resolutions tonight, applies logic in the common sense. That's why I'm...
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'll close this portion of the meeting. Mrs. Martin, we move academic resolutions 1 and 2, please.
Yes, Mr. President, I move academic resolutions 1 and 2 as written.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Stan Kimbora?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynn?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. Kaczynski, move administrative resolutions 1 through 5.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I move administrative resolutions 1 through 5.
Second. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Kaczynski, move it.
No, no, sorry, it's not that, it's one of the personnel.
Okay, sorry. Mr. Spazado, we move finance resolutions 1 through 35.
Mr. President, I move finance resolutions 1 through 35, as written.
Discussion. Mrs. Flynn.
Yes, Mr. Cook, I'd like to make a motion to amend Finance Resolution Number 11 and 12, both to remove the language that says 2012, 2013 school year, and to replace it, well, Resolution Number 11, well, that will deal with the issue, and Resolution Number 12, it would remove the fact that it's for the school year 2012, 2013, and indicate that it's pending completion of the RFQ process, that's it.
Second.
Discussion on the amendment to the resolution. Call the roll, please. On the amendment, this is just the amendment, yeah, we're quoting on the amendment. No, no, we're, we're, call the roll for the motion to amend 11 and 12.
Yes.
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 Yes. Discussion on the resolutions 1 through 35. Any other discussion? Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, on number 30 and 31, I will not be supporting those this evening, I got appointed last year, I talked about that I wanted a review of this on occupational therapy services, on service providers, many parents telling me they don't see the same person all the time, a lot of complaints, I know we brought a new director on, and I would like to see at least the new director had a meeting to review those first, so it's just a statement, but I won't be supporting those this evening, as I said.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
On yes to all except for Resolution 15 and 16. No for 15 and 16.
Um, yes on all except for Resolution Number 31, for similar reasons, just like trustee and Ms. Flynn.
We're talking about resolutions...
1 to 35.
1 to 35, yes.
Um, it'll be no on number 11, I cannot, even though there's a hobby agenda on one timeline, so we'll court that as a stance, and I'll also be voting all on 30 and 31. Yes on those.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Spazado, I'm sorry, the, the number 36...
Number 36.
Number 36 is the, no trial left behind approval.
I move Resolution Number 36, as written.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. Spazado, will you move addendum resolutions 37 and 38?
Yes, Mr. Cook, I re, I re, move Resolution Number 37, appointment of board council, and 38, appointment of special counsel, as written.
Is that correct, or 37 was the...
37 is board counsel, 38 is special counsel.
37 is what?
38.
37.
Appointment of special counsel.
You can second.
Yes, I'll second, I'm not sure of the, of the sequence, okay? I was told that 37 was the, the special counsel, and 38 was the board. Okay. I second both motions.
Discussion.
Mr. President, do you want to speak on it now, or speak on it as I'm voting?
Speak on it.
Okay. This has been a tough subject, it's been around since when I ran, through the process, down to the final two, I was involved in the interviews on the final two, and I marked down some keywords while people were speaking tonight, and, well, Vinnie, Vinnie talked about moving forward and wasting money, Neil talked about contracts going forward, everyone here talked about reviewing contracts totally, Mr. Reilly talked about cleaning house, I have to state that these two together are something that I probably will support, I'd like to explain why. The board council, we met with the company that's being shanked by Smith McCann, in their interview, were very clear about the transition, and that they might not take on all the current projects, the current attorney has, depending where they stand, there might be an extra cost to take on those other projects if they did, there will also be transition costs to them. That was a concern of mine, listened to that, and I did like the firm very much. So my proposal, I agree with, is that the way it's going to be standing is we will be having a board council, the other one's named special counsel, to take on new projects, the superintendent has the authority on those new projects, call, we don't pay ahead of time, to call whichever law firm he chooses, he needs to call on that. So if it's an existing project they did not take on, he will be calling Gashion, Camaco, or Beck. If it's a new project that's going to encounter into the board, superintendent has the authority to call special counsel. I also abstained on the other votes of the other attorneys, because I think that some of the things we're doing with special counsel can also be absorbed there to be better concise and save us money. So those two resolutions together, as I've stated, with the superintendent having that ability to make the call, I will still be supporting the two together. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, if you would allow, I just wanted to discuss the process that we adhered to and we followed on the ad hoc committee. As you may recall, in December of last year, we adopted a bylaw to board for purposes of reviewing professional services contracts, in order to ensure that our contracts are awarded in a more deliberative and efficient manner, to make sure that we obtain the highest quality services at a fair, competitive price, for through a shared services arrangement. Tonight, we approved a shared services arrangement, I know this board has been focused on that. As it related to the attorney process, we sent out to him at the end of last year, they would receive, and I know there were some questions regarding the factors, that was part of our evaluation. The ad hoc committee evaluated proposals in accordance with this policy, which included evaluation of the following factors: management criteria, technical criteria, the cost, and prior experience, and performance, and our score sheet was created in a way to evaluate that as, as related to an attorney. We met, we met, we scored them, we met with the top three, that we, we, we received 13 proposals, we met with, as you averaged myself, the scores of my trustee Kaczynski and Russo, we met with the top three, we interviewed them, we narrowed it down to two, and then we brought it to the full board for their interview, because we all thought this was important enough that all of us should have to say, and, and I'm glad we did have that opportunity. So I'm a little perplexed as to like, the time it took, and I've expressed that enough times. The second issue I wanted to bring up is this idea of addendum, and it's something the board is concerned about, and I know the public must be concerned about it too. This was an important issue, these resolutions are foreign, they're something the public's been watching, with TRITech matter so in front, and, and it's been such a divisive issue, and I think we all agree we want to move it forward, despite everything else, we agree we want to move this district forward, especially with this TRITech lawsuit. So I think, as a board, we prefer not to have these type of resolutions done by addendum in the future, and it's a, it's a practice that we have to stop, and I think we're focused on doing so, and I think we all realize it's contrary to the spirit of the Open Public Meetings Act, and I'm hopeful that practice will just continue. As this appointment, it's been something that, as an attorney, values our, our system and the rules that we play by, as a lawyer, this, this appointment concerns me, because I personally, like Frank Camaco, I've enjoyed working with him through our negotiations, as well as my fellow board members. I felt him helpful in the advice he gave us as board members, and I thought him and I agreed on most things, you know, during that process. In light of that, and even before that, I thought I gave him a fair evaluation, because it's professional, I thought he deserved it. I thought Mr. Camaco, during this evaluation process, found himself in a tough position, because he has been sued by TRITech, and brought in the middle of this brawl between this district and TRITech, which has resulted in him having to protect himself, and prior to myself, trustee Martin, and trustee Scolera joining the board, he had to file suit to protect himself. Prior to us getting on the board, he, there was a consent order to enter into, in an attempt to address that conflict, because Mr. Camaco didn't want to be conflicted with us, he wanted to continue to work with us. However, as a lawyer, I'm in a tough, tough pickle here, trying to vote for someone who has sued us, I understand the, the idea that a public entity can't wave a conflict, a unclear how, I mean, I understand how a consent order can be entered into, holding it abey its claims for a future date, I understand that, but the issue of the conflict has never really been addressed properly, and that was one of my issues. Throughout the year, I've seen how the conflict has translated, practically speaking, we all as board members are in a tough position of not being able to talk to him about the TRITech litigation, which is a significant portion of our legal budget, and I don't think that's fair, it's frustrating to us, and I don't think it's fair to any of us have, for this situation. So I'm happy that the board has engaged in this process, I'm happy that they are dedicated towards moving forward, but tonight, in the deal here, I have to vote no on this resolution, it's only because of the conflict that was created, it's something I can't, I cannot look at, and, and I just thought, Mr. Camaco deserves to understand why, and I think he does, he's talked about it personally, you know, one-on-one, why someone, why I am voting no on that resolution.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Call the, call, call the roll.
No to Resolution 37, which is the board council, if I got that right, and yes to 38, special counsel.
Yes, on both resolutions.
I'm voting yes on both, to clarify, because I opened with a statement, that clearing house, reviewing contracts, wasting money, that's why the two firms are necessary, so that the contracts are being reviewed at lower cost to us, that we are cleaning house as we go forward, and we are protecting our students as we go forward, so if that's in our work, yes on both.
Yes, on both.
Yes, on both. Mr. Kaczynski, move personal resolutions 1 and 2.
I move personal resolutions 1 and 2, as so presented. I'm sorry, I, I, there are some modifications to the personal agenda report that the board carries through, they can go to page six of the, um, personal agenda, there's two names that need to be added, that at the bottom are non-athletic, they are F Russo and G Serenka, that are for board, so choose, they can go to page nine of the same agenda, and under the bucket of Mrs. Florence Myers, had it listed as Lincoln School, and in fact, as Yanaco School. With that, I vote for agendas, uh, personal agendas 1 and 2.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, on both.
Yes, on both.
Yes. Mr. Scolero, will you move personal resolution number 3, and we should move it in priority?
Whereas Mr. John Colicchio has tendered his resignation as principal of John Age Walker Middle School, effective July 1, 2012, and has signified his intention of retiring from active service, and whereas Mr. Colicchio has served as physical education feature, physical education department head, elementary principal, and middle school principal in the Nuthley Public Schools for a period of 33 years, and whereas, though the years Mr. Colicchio has exemplified the finest qualities of his profession at all times, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education expresses to Mr. Colicchio his deep appreciation of his long and faithful service, and extends to him its best wishes for continued health and happiness, be therefore resolved that this resolution be made a part of the minutes of this meeting and a copy presented to Mr. Colicchio.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Kaczynski, move...
Resolution number 4, testimony of teachers, whereas the following teachers have tendered their resignation and have signified their intention of retiring from active service, that, that's a, an understatement, and whereas through the years they've exemplified the finest qualities of their profession at all times, now therefore be resolved, the Board of Education expresses its deep appreciation of their long and faithful service, and extends its best wishes for continued health and happiness, be further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the minutes, following teachers on our reading, our fellow, Paula Cofone, Patricia, Patricia, come on, Marta, I'm sorry, Mary Piviana, and Mary Emporata, when I add these years together, it'll look me at 135 years of active service. Outstanding, we're going to miss them, I still move the resolution.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Yes.
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 Testimony guidance counselor, whereas the following guidance counselors have tendered their resignations and have signified their intentions of retiring from active service, whereas through the years they... Whereas through the years, they exemplified the finest qualities of their profession at all times, now therefore be resolved that the Nuthy Board of Education expresses its deep appreciation of their long and faithful service and extends its best wishes for continued health and happiness, be further resolved that this resolution be made part of the minutes. James Morrow, 37 years, and Mary Frances Simmons, 28 years. I so move.
Sir. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Scolera?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Before we move the last resolution, we have, although there is no testimony, I'd like to thank Mr. Ed Barry and Mr. Chair Ovialanti, who are interim positions, and thank them for their service for this past year. Mr. Kaczynski, move addendum 6.
Yes, Mr. President. I move addendum Resolution number 6, appointment of athletic physician. Be resolved that the Board approves Dr. Von Wacht as the athletic physician for the 2012-2013 school year at the yearly rate of $11,451. I so move.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Kaczynski?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Scolera?
Yes.
Scolera?
Yes.
Yes. Hearing of the citizens. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember always to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. First person who should be here or heard, please step forward.
Hi, my name is Robin Henning, 31 Terrace Avenue. I'm addressing the board on behalf of my daughter Pamela Henning. Pamela Braden won and then lost the senior class presidential election. At this point, her being president is not the issue at all. What concerns her the most is the message she received and that the entire class received from this experience. In brief, when Pamela, who was junior class treasurer, decided to run against the current president, the student council advisor told that this was a bad idea. She discussed this issue with myself, my husband, and her sisters. She knew going into this was a difficult situation because she was running against a peer, and there was going to be all sorts of fallout and blood hot. But it was really important to her, and she decided to roll ahead of it. She went ahead, and she ran in a three-way race. Apparently, there was, she won. The first time there was an election, she won. And she won by three votes, and there was a simple majority needed, which everyone was sort of unaware about. She was told that there needed to be a rebook. There seemed to be no precedent on this, and the next day, it turned out, Mr. Parker found that there was precedent in the student constitution. So now there was going to be a rebook. Before then, sorry, I have to backtrack. Before then, when there was no precedent, she was told she did win. She was president. We bought Carvel King at night. She was excited. And then we were told that there was precedent. So there was a rebook, after a rebook, she lost. During this time, and this is really the most important part of it, Pamela was having a blogger retaliation on her, on Twitter and Facebook from her home. There ended up being an HIV investigation at school, and the girl that she ran against received two days of school suspension, at which point she was tweeting from its school suspension, saying that she wasn't suspended. And all sorts of things were going on. My daughter was extremely, extremely upset over this whole situation. She was coming home crying, saying, "Why am I being good?" She never retaliated once. I know the administration would back me 100% of this. There's documentation. I'm here because things like this are not okay. I worked as a staff for 12 years. It's not okay for advisors to put their personal feelings into things. This whole thing culminated with a front-page picture of Mr. Ryan and the girl that won the election, and it was clearly staged, just the two of them, like, "Oh, wow, look, you won the election." Pamela, I knew this school year, just throwing home and running to trash. She was crying, she wanted to go to school. This was my part of the, she had to take her SATs the day after this whole thing was going on. This facility did an amazing job investigating the HIV situation. Everyone needs to be careful about what they say and the messages they receive. My daughter really felt that she was victimized by many different people. We have a responsibility to everyone in this school to make sure that good behavior gets rewarded and bad behavior gets penalized. Unfortunately, because of the way this constitution is written, and I do understand it's being revamped, that's why I'm helping Pamela right now. I'm just kind of urging everyone to be aware of the situation. It's not okay that happened to my daughter, and it could happen to any other student. Thank you.
Seeing no one else stepping forward, close this portion of the meeting. Any other business?
I was just wondering, Chartwell's, I know we just re-approved them, and I've been getting a lot of complaints from parents, so I was just wondering if they can come in. I know they were supposed to do a parent survey, but it's the end of school year already.
I think we should have them in, say, in September, once everybody's back to school, and have them in and give a formal presentation to the full board. If you can arrange that, please.
And also, the insurance for the dental and the health. Can we, for next year, because they show that we didn't go out for competitive bids with different brokers, and that's a really big chunk of our budget, it's over $8 million? And I don't know why we didn't do it this year, but next year, can we make sure we go out for a bid for that?
Where the, you're talking the insurance or you're talking brokers?
Insurance.
The insurance, the broker bids it to various companies.
Right, but we're only using one broker for different companies. I mean, we would need to get different brokers to give us different bids, so that they're competitive.
Not sure that this is how the system works. We'll have to look into that.
Okay.
We'll put that on the finance committees.
All right, because it's really not in his best interest to give us the best price, and this commission is all for the total price of the insurance.
If the broker isn't getting a best deal, then we change brokers.
How would you know that if you don't have the prices?
Okay, thank you. Any other old business? Any new business? I'm sorry.
I just, again, wanted to thank everyone who participated in strategic planning. That was a big issue for a lot of people I spoke to, a lot of parents, and even the people that participated, when I would run into them at, you know, Chartwell's, they'd tell me that they were coming for a meeting, going for a meeting, and the public, the members that participated were really happy that they were asked and that they were being involved in the process. And I want to thank Lisa, Charlie, and Robert for always keeping us updated about what was going on, because it really made us feel like a part of the process as well. And I guess the super captain, too. And also, I wanted to echo the comments made by trustee Spazado about negotiations. I mean, it was my first go-around, I learned a lot during the process, and I think everyone worked very hard in trying to get a fair deal, and I wanted to just say that. I think we did, I think it was, I think it was a good contract and fair for everyone, and I'm glad we all maintained everyone's interest. I felt really part of the process, and I wanted to thank you again for letting me participate.
New business, I got one.
New business.
Policy, can look into setting up procedures for high school graduation in case of rain. I think we need to have a backup plan and work it out with the high school principal, our fire department, our police department. I think we need some procedures that we can fall back on, because I know we don't often look to want to go inside, but we should definitely have some kind of a game plan to address, so that nothing ever happens again, the way it happened.
Thank you. Any other new business? If not, whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education recesses to close executive session at this time to discuss negotiations with matters and interview board candidates. Be further resolved that the results of the discussion be made public by inclusion on the agenda of subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, or when the reasons for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exist. I so move. Well, the favor, I have one announcement before we, one, we'll be going into closed session, and when we finish our business, we will adjourn with no further business. And we are moving the July meeting from July 23rd to Tuesday, July 17th. Reason for doing that is so that we could be in compliance with the 65-day rule and naming the successor to Ms. Rogers. Thank you.